Okay, well, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of October 25, 2022. Thank you everyone for joining. Could we please have a roll call?
Natasha Chalmers.
Present.
Jeffrey Swisher is absent. Brock Wagstaff.
I am here.
Max Williamson.
Present.
And Liam Campbell is absent. But that is quorum.
Great, thank you. All right, first item, do we have any public comment on matters not on the agenda?
I don't see any hands raised.
No one? Okay, then in that case, we can, can I please request the planning director's report?
Thank you. We're still waiting for a draft of the housing element, but I'm expecting to get a draft, maybe the second week of November, and then hoping to bring it to our Housing Steering Committee on the 17th of November. And in the, between now and the end of the year or two, the city will be considering new building codes for 2000, considering adopting the 2002 building codes with our local amendments, so you might see that in the agendas for the council between now and the end of the year, and that's all I have to report today.
Thank you very much, Elise, thank you. So shall we dive into the public hearings? There are two matters here on the agenda, but the first one is Eight Heather Way. I think we have a statement on this.
Yes, do you want me to go ahead?
Yes.
So we, that, we are going to have to continue that to a date uncertain. We have not received the required documents to hear it for a date certain. So we'll just have to re-notice that item when it's complete and ready to be heard by Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do we need a motion to do that?
It probably wouldn't be a bad idea to continue it to an uncertain date, since it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, Brock, do you want to make a?
I will move that we move item 2213, Eight Heather Way, to a date uncertain.
Max, could you second that, please?
Yes, I second.
Thank you. We don't need a roll.
Oh, well, let me call, I call your names, just to be formal. Natasha Chalmers.
Yes.
Jeffrey Swisher is absent, Brock Wagstaff.
Yes.
Max Williamson.
Yes.
And Liam Campbell is absent, so it passes by three to zero with two members absent.
Thank you. The next item, the public hearing agenda is 337 Madrone Avenue, Project 2219. Could we please have the staff report?
My pleasure. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Anna Lianza. I am senior planner here, and I would like to share with you, if I can share my screen. I find it a little easier to show maps and visuals to kind of help walk us through the project. Let me go ahead. Okay, so we will be looking today at Project 2219 at 337 Madrone Avenue. The project is in the western side of Larkspur Canyon at 337 Madrone Avenue. Today, we will be looking at, we'll be considering heritage review. This is a heritage resource on our local inventory for heritage resources, a slope use permit, a design review, a floor area ratio exception, and two variances, and I'd like to go into a little bit more detail on each of those projects. So Heritage Preservation, Section 18.19.035 of our municipal code, requires that a historic preservation board reviews and kind of takes into account any changes that are proposed for any historic resources in our city. And historic resources were determined by a survey, and then they were each added to our local inventory. Once the Heritage Preservation Board has determined that the project is worthwhile, it's not going to have significant impacts to the historic resource, then they will approve it on their level and send it to any commission for any commissions approval. So that's why we're here with the heritage review. The slope use permit is required when cut and fill is proposed on a slope of more than 25 and/or the cut and fill exceeds 25 cubic yards. In this case, both of those are, both of those are for this project. Then we move on to the design review, which is required for any building development or any site or building development or modification requiring discretionary review, which is why we see so many design reviews come to Planning Commission. Floor area, oh, floor area ratio, not ration, or FAR exception, allows a greater FAR than what's allowed by right. So in this situation, we're looking at an R1 zoning district. And when we, when we look at the exceptions, there are a few things to consider. We want to make sure that the building design employs max-reducing techniques and blends with the neighborhood, and that the structure will not contribute to adverse traffic or parking conditions. So it's not making it bigger, it's not making it, you know, more bulky, it's not having any significant changes to the surrounding neighborhood or the streetscape. So for this, for this project, there's a proposal to increase the FAR, the existing FAR is .22, which is well below the maximum allowed by right of .4, but they would like to increase that to .41. So it's just over the maximum allowed, and we'll go into a little bit more detail of why that's being asked for. So the next thing that we're going to be looking at are the variances. Now, for this project, two variances are being proposed, and it's important to consider why the variances are being asked for. So variances are appropriate for certain developments that can't be satisfied due to physical hardship. So we're going to be looking at the shape of the lot, the size of the lot. If there's a large outcropping of rocks or trees, heritage trees, something like that where, you know, they, it's physically impossible or improbable to actually have the use on the parcel. In this situation, we're looking at a historic structure. So this, the structure has been deemed a historic resource, and for that reason, preserve that resource as much as possible. So the variances that are being asked for in this, in this project are the, are variances from the setback requirements for the side and rear setback for the rear property line. So in this case, there's, the property was built on the property lines, excuse me, the home was built on the property line. So it would be the only way to meet those setback lines or to those, meet those setback requirements, actually pick up the structure and move it to meet those setbacks. In this case, this is, it is a historic structure. We want to maintain the historic integrity of it, so the variance is reasonable and appropriate for this, for the situation. Which is, brings us to the next slide. I did want to look at some site data. One of our commissioners made the comment that the site data was difficult to, was difficult to read on the plans. So in the future, we'll make sure that this is an attachment in your packets. So this, the site data kind of goes through the requirements of our code, written in our code, and in addition to that, the existing, what's existing on the site and what's proposed. For this project, there's not a whole lot that is changing aside from the floor area. And then there's a little, there's a little less lot coverage, and I'll go into a little bit more detail about that as well. You can see that the shed is being removed. There's a shed and a wood deck that will be removed, and we'll look at a visual of that. The floor area is being, is proposed to be increased. The, the actual floor area of the structure itself is very modest. It's being, it is currently 668 square feet, which by today's standards is not big enough for a family to, to live in. So the proposal is to increase that to 1,259 square feet, which is very modest for a single-family home. Let's see. The setbacks here, if you want, if you can look at that, these are the required or the maximum, minimum, maximum, and nothing is being changed with this proposed project. The only thing on this that would be changed is the height of the structure. And again, the, the reason for this change is to lift up the house to actually make habitable space in the basement below grade level. Currently, it is, it has been improved, but not legally. So the owners would like to take the necessary steps to legalize the below-grade living space and create some more space for their family. So let's take a look at the existing site. I'd like to point out that the existing home, this is the historic cottage. This, what you see here is the historic resource. So the front, the facade of the, of the existing cottage. So what's being preserved in this, in this situation are the windows and the door. So those are the historic resources that are the, what, those are the historic qualities of the cottage that, that we'd like to see be maintained. So the existing site plan shows the home on the kind of shoved way back into the back and side property lines. There is the existing shed and a wooden deck and some concrete stairs that come down with the concrete landing. For the the shed will be removed. These stairs and the landing will be, will be, will make, will be, excuse me, will remain. And new wood landing over the patio will be, will be installed. So not a whole lot of change to the site plan that we can see. The footprint will not be expanded. The existing shed will be removed. The home will be raised two and a half feet to create that code-compliant, finished below-grade living space, and then some minor exterior upgrades, so windows and doors, and we'll take a look at the elevations. So the, this is the, the rear elevation. So you can see there are four existing windows and two on top. The proposal, the new, the, the new additions will be these, will be two windows in place of the four. And not, not a whole lot more, and you will notice that there is another two and a half feet of height added to the building. On the westerly elevations, you'll see really very minor changes. There's a larger window and also some stairs coming down. The easterly elevations, so I'd like to kind of draw your, your eyes to this area here, which will be the excavated area to create that below-grade living space. And so these are the existing eastern elevations, and the new elevations, well, you know, they're including some more windows. They will be excavating that, the area below the front of the house, and not a whole lot more. There's some, some aesthetic changes to it. The door is moved, so not, not, you know, keep in mind that the footprint will remain the same. And the front elevations, you'll notice very little is changing with the front elevations, and that really is, that has to do with this being the front-facing historic resource that we would like to preserve. You will notice that there is a new wood deck and landing, and that's to accommodate the, the, the extra height in the, in the home. And, and again, the below-grade excavation will be the new living space. So in conclusion, the, you know, the proposed renovations meet the intent of the Heritage Preservation chapter of our, of our municipal code. The design standards of the municipal code for first residential district regulation, regulations are satisfied, and all required findings could be made for each of the, each of the projects that are being, that are being applied for. So the heritage review, the slope use permit, design review, FAR exception, and the two variances. So that staff recommends approval of project number 2219 for the proposed renovations and site improvement at 337 Madrone Avenue as conditioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anna. That was a very, very good presentation. I really appreciated that. I want to see if any of my fellow commissioners had any questions for Anna.
I had one question, which, which I couldn't find in the staff report, but do you know when the house was built?
Oh, gosh, let me see here, let me see if I've got that.
You're just out of curiosity.
You know, it would be in another staff report.
That's okay. I mean, if it's on the historic preservation list, it's probably in the twenties or some, looks that way, but
Yeah.
I didn't get in the staff report and
Kit said it was 1929, right?
Yeah, it was in the twenties.
It says 1929 on the, the form.
Okay.
In the, yeah, I think it's the historic design analysis.
And, and on the site plan, it's very hard to read plans that are so tiny, even though, you know, they're bigger than the eight-and-a-half-by-elevens, but maybe you can bring up that site plan, because I think there's a big, is, is that a big redwood tree next to the walkway that goes down? I see that from the pictures, it looks like there's redwoods.
So you would, you were looking at?
At the site plan. Which is A1.0.
Oh, I see, I see. Let me
Is that, you can't see my arrow, unfortunately.
But I can pull that up. Give me one second, and I'll pull that up. I'll pull up the actual site plan for, that was.
Brock, I went down to see the property, and I, and I, I think there are redwoods dotted around the front. Maybe it's a question for the applicant. Well, I'm not a
I think there are two. I I've seen the house before. I didn't actually guess that this time.
There were some beautiful trees there, and I think that's what they were. I had a question for Anna. Because I know that there is no parking here. This doesn't have any designated parking. And I know there's the encroachment at the back, and I just wanted to just have you clarify, so we can actually write it into the minutes, what, how we get around the fact that there's no, there's no, we don't have to comply with the parking, and we don't have to resolve the encroachment.
That, that's where I was going with the redwood trees.
Oh, sorry, Brock, I didn't mean to jump in there.
So let me pull this up really quickly. So this would be considered, and Commissioner Wagstaff, you were looking, you wanted to know, this is the existing site. Is this the, the I'm trying to figure out if this is the A1? Was that the one, was that the?
So it looked like that, that's an 80-inch redwood tree right there, right in the middle, although it shifts around.
84-inch, yes.
Okay.
Uh-huh, redwood? And then a 60-inch redwood, so some pretty this is really just a heritage site itself. And to get, to get back to the, the parking question, so the house is way down. So first of all, is an existing non-conforming lot. So back when this was built, parking wasn't required, so the parking was never created. And in order to put parking in, if we were to require it to be, to comply with current standards, they would, we could require them to encroach into this gravel shoulder or, which is currently there for parking, or we may require them to actually excavate and come down and find some way to park here. But because it's a non-conforming parcel, wouldn't require the parking to be created.
That's great, and if we could write that into the minute, so we can point to that in the future if there's ever an issue. We, we just don't want to set a precedent here. And it's, and I had the same question regarding the encroachment at the back that goes into
And, and that would be this, that would be the same.
Yeah.
So for the Marin County open space, there is existing fencing that will be removed. I, you know, I don't know, maybe Elise has something else to add to this, but there is no structure in here aside from the fence, which, again, non-conforming, it could have been put up decades ago, or, you know, last week, and we, without a permit, and we wouldn't really know. But the fact that it's being moved is, is a consideration for us.
Oh, so the fence that's in the, in the open space reserve portion is gonna, is gonna come down?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay, Elise, did you have anything to add to that, or?
No, in, in general, yeah, I would be hesitant to get involved in issues with fences on other people's property, but, and let them take care of their disputes, because, you know, we wouldn't know if there's an easement or that's been created by having that area enclosed so long. But it does propose all these plans to remove that fence.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Brock, did you, did you have any more questions?
No. I'm good.
Okay. Well, if we have no more questions for staff, maybe we can open it up to the attendees and see if the applicant or her architect would like to present.
Hi. I think Marty is probably going to be on, join on the line, too. My name is Elise Stratton. This is my son Jasper. We are the residents here. I, yes, I think the house was from 1929. Yes, there's one large redwood tree in the very front center of the front yard. The yard slopes right down very steeply until you get to the house. And then there's a flat area that the house is built on. To be very honest, this house belonged to the neighbors before, and I think what happened was that the house existed, and then the lot lines were drawn after it. I didn't know if there were any statement or any points you needed me to address right now.
I wanted to add something.
Yes. Hi, Marty.
Hi, hi, Elise. Hi, Jasper. As part of the, it was a good staff report. There was just one tiny element that we left out, and that is that we met with the neighbors on both sides of the property. And in your packet today, you were emailed letters of support from both sides.
Thank you, thank you. We did receive those.
Good.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Stratton or her architect? None? Okay. Do we have any public comment on the application tonight?
There's no hands raised to comment.
Okay, well, in that case, I think we can bring it back to the commission for discussion. I'm going to start with Commissioner Wagstaff, if you'd like to share your comments, please.
Okay. To me, this is a, is a really well-thought-out project, and it's an opportunity to preserve a historic house and make it livable, and, and that means it stays preserved. It's, so I see it as an opportunity for the city as well as the people that live there. And I think they've done a really good job of, of making that a much more livable house. And, and where I was going with the redwood tree is, I, I think you have to lose a off-street parking spot to get it on-site parking spot. And that doesn't seem like a worthwhile trade, given that you're going to have a great big platform there to be able to do that. So it's one of those funky little Larkspur houses, and I'm totally supportive of what they're doing.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Williamson, can we hear your comments, please?
Yeah, similarly, it seems like a great way to, you know, invest in the future of that house and the historic site that it's built on. My only real, like, question and concern was really around the proximity between that and the 339 right next door, just given that there's going to be significant, you know, kind of structural considerations to lift the house, but given the statements of support from the neighbors, it seems like that's all been worked out, so I'm very much in support.
Thank you very much. And there's really only me left, given we're two commissioners down. And I, yes, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think this was, this is a really great project, and I want to thank Anna for, for a really detailed and well-presented staff report, which I thought addressed all the factors very well indeed. And as a result, I think it was pretty clear and easy for us to be able to make the findings for the two variances, the FAR permit, and the slope use permit. And I think, I mean, having read the heritage review minutes, I can totally agree with their findings as well. And then on design review, again, this is setback, this is just, with keeping the same footprint, it's just moving up, so I can easily make the findings for design review. So with that, I think we can have a motion, please.
Max, this is your big chance.
You might need to help me with the terminology, but
You know, given it's its first meeting for Max, maybe Brock, you make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Max can second.
I would move approval of Project 2219, which is 337 Madrone Avenue, including floor area ratio exceptions, setback variances, slope use permit, and, I guess, design review.
And Max, if you want to second that?
Yes, I want to second that. Yes, I want to second that.
Could we please have a roll call for the vote?
Commissioner Chalmers.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams. And Commissioners Campbell and Swisher are absent. So the motion passes three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the public hearing portion. If, I think we can move on to the business items.
Sorry, we have a hand raised. Mr. Zwick, can we, can I call him and find out if you need something else?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that.
Marty, if you need to speak, I unmuted you.
I wanted to say thank you to the commissioners for their review and to the planner for the complete staff report. You're more than welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, wonderful. So can we now have a motion to approve the minutes from two weeks ago, October the eleven, twenty twenty-two?
Well, there was only two of us
I know.
At that meeting. I'll, I'll move to approve. We've done this
Can I?
Yeah, so they say it's okay to do since it's just approving a not necessarily what happened, just the minutes.
So I can second then? Can I second?
I, I don't see a problem with that. Oh, if you only, yeah, if you don't feel comfortable voting on him, Max, that's fine. But you could vote on him if you wanted to.
Oh, on the lies.
So this is the approval of the minutes for the last meeting. I think you may have been on the phone, but you didn't, we didn't see or hear you.
Yeah, apologies. I was traveling for work and was having some AV setup issues. And coincidentally, the lies fall within the, the radius that I was instructed not to participate.
On one of the items, yeah.
Could you hear though? Were you able to hear? Oh, okay, well, that's
Yeah, it was really frustrating because you called my name and I tried to hit the, that thing and it wasn't working.
Let me take a vote. Commissioner Chalmers?
For the approval of the minutes?
For the approval of the minutes, right.
Oh, yes.
And Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
And Commissioners Swisher and Campbell are absent. So the motion passes three to zero.
Great, thank you. So do we have any planning commissioners' reports tonight?
I actually have, I, I, a report that I am now a board member on the Commons Foundation. Will be the, eventually, we hope, the new library.
I'm glad, so glad to hear that.
Now that they have that money.
I won't be able to vote on it when, when it comes up. I don't know. But it, it sounds like a really, I'm, I've sort of been following it, obviously. And, and it's a project that, you know, what, what's a library today? And lot, lots of things to consider. And I kind of wanted to get involved, so I did.
That's great, good to hear.
Great, thank you.
What's the proposed site? Sorry, the, the first thing I'm really hearing about it.
It's, it's, there's a big square open space in Rose Lane, which is the subdivision behind Lucky's kind of. And that was set aside with pretty much that in mind way back when. And it's taken a long time to raise the funds. But it, the city has raised, I think, five million dollars and the state is matching that. So there's now money available. It's been a long haul.
It just hit the target. It was in the last couple of months, right? And it just hit that target, right?
Right.
And the, the city council's talking about what to do with the current library in the city hall building. And there's even going to be a meeting tomorrow afternoon. There's a special meeting on October twenty-sixth at three o'clock here at City Hall to talk about some options for, for the city, city offices too. So it's a lot of project that's going on at once.
I'm curious what the timing on that is. So now that they have the funding and they have the plans, right? Because I've seen plans.
There, those, those are really fundraising plans.
Like renderings, okay.
The renderings. There was a lot of thought that went into them and, and the, the architect who did it, what they wanted to do was give people some idea of what you're, what you're contributing to. And I, I think unfortunately, he was, he was killed in an accident, so.
Oh, oh, my gosh. Recently?
Pretty recently, yeah.
Oh, wow, gosh. That's awful.
But, you know, lots of things to decide, you know? How do you go about it? What, who is, he was not going to be the architect, but he, he contributed that to it. And at least I don't think he was. So, you know, whether it's design build or how you, how you go about it. It'll be a while.
Are we talking about another ten years or are we talking?
No, no.
I mean, like that, some of the grants have been empty.
Some of the grant funding needs to be spent pretty soon. So I think some of the, they want to move forward pretty quickly so that they don't lose some of the funding. And then the rest of it is really, because the other grants have deadlines too, it's really going to start moving fast now. I was thinking, I was trying to think of it when, if my, I think my son, it might be built by the time my son's a senior in high school. And he's a, he's in eighth grade now, so that's what I was calculating.
I suspect it's, you know, two to four years is my, my bet.
To completion or to breaking ground?
Well, hopefully, to completion. But, you know, it's, there's lots of things to decide how it works. And but I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for the city. And to be honest, Elise will tell you that, and you, you know this too, city, the existing city hall is, is, is a bit of a ancient
problematic.
Two of us have been in here for earthquakes now and both of us were very frightened.
Yeah, that's right.
From the one today.
Yeah, Jackie, Jackie was in here for that one and she ran out the building.
You have to run out.
And I was, I was down at, I was down at farmhouse and I didn't even feel it.
Wow. Well, Brock, I think they're lucky to have you. So it's good to see that you're involved in that.
Thank you.
That's great.
Do we have anything else we want to talk about? Otherwise, welcome, Max. I'm glad to see you, see you today.
Definitely.
Yeah, and, and thanks for your, for Anna, your feedback on the, on the commissioner training. I, the one in March, I think, will work well, so looking forward to that.
Yeah, and I think that we wanted to get you guys, it was just really last minute. You know, I was there and I was like, I can do it, I want to do it. But I think it was a little bit last minute to try to get everybody together to see who was available. But absolutely, the one in March is, I, I, I think it's in Southern California, though. I think it's in Garden Grove. So, you know, we could do that one or we could wait for the Sonoma State, which is a little bit closer. But yeah, they're, they're definitely worth going to. And, and again, I just want to kind of put it out there that if you ever have questions, if you need clarification on a staff report or anything else, please contact us. We really are here to help you understand the staff report. And, you know, we, we really do, we write the staff reports for you. So, so if you, if you need clarification or have questions, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
And Anna, perhaps we can repeat that message when Liam's on, back on again. I'm not sure he's actually heard anyone say that for him, but
Oh, I, I told him that.
Oh, you told him that? Great, no, that's great.
And, and also, we did, we had, there was a PowerPoint that we went over. I mean, it was an eight-hour training, so we were there all day. And we went over this great PowerPoint and there were lots of examples. And, and I would love to get that from the presenters and send it out to you guys. And then, you know, if we can, you can watch it yourself or look through the, the slides yourself. And then, you know, if you have questions, we can, I can help you with that because I, I was there, so.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I did have a quick question, Elise. Can, can I give you back the forty Manila envelopes I got?
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Related in the last.
Thank you for keeping them.
With my name on them, you can use them again.
If you drop them off next time you bring your, get a packet.
Okay, I'll do it, thanks.
Well, that's a good idea. I'll do the same.
On that, on that, that's a great segue into a question that Jackie and I were thinking about. Are the, are the hard copies beneficial to you?
They, absolutely.
Yeah, they are to me too.
Okay, good, good. We just want to make sure that we're not, you know, putting a, a ton of effort into something that, that isn't really benefiting you. You always have access to the digital, the digital plans as well, which might be easier to kind of look at the actual submitted plans and the, you know, the fine print on those plans. But as long as the, the, the hard copy plans are working for you, then we will continue. Glad to do that.
I mean, I like to read the staff report in hard copy. I find that helpful for sure. The plans, it is helpful, but you're right, when I go online, I can zoom in and actually
Right.
Yeah.
And, and the plans are really useful in terms of going back and forth between pages. And it's hard to do on, online.
I see, okay, great. Yeah, some jurisdictions have iPads for their commissioners and
There we go.
Council members, yeah. Which I think would probably pay for itself with staff time and, you know, printing and paper and, you know, all of that. But you can't, but you're right, you can't really flip through like you would with a hard copy.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, great. Well, thank you very much. I think we can have a motion to adjourn.
Max?
Very simple, that one. Brock, you'll have to second.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. And if you want to, we don't need to do it, we can just still say
All those in favor, you could say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Good night, thank you.
Thank you. See you in a couple of weeks, right? We have a meeting in two weeks. Is that correct?
The eighth of November.